Welcome to the City Council meeting. The agenda for a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, June 15th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in the City Council chambers will now come to order. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGaris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Yes, here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a forum.
Thank you Clerk Young. Item three, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing nine, item four, items for action at a special meeting. A, in accordance with Section 110.040 of the Code of Orders of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, entitled Compensation for Councilmen, the City Manager will present to each councilperson their salary for services to the City of Papa Bluff for fiscal year 2019-2020. Mr. Massingham.
Out of all the council meetings, this is probably the one I enjoy the most when these dedicated public servants get this coin that's worth a hundred thousand dol- no, I'm sorry, a dollar.
[laughing]
We've always put silver dollars on these and we're having trouble finding them, so this year we have the gold dollar, the presidential dollar. I'm gonna read this plaque and every one of them will get the same plaque with their name on it. "City of Papa Bluff, Missouri presents to Ron Black this $1 compensation in appreciation and gratitude for outstanding service to the community as City Councilman-at-Large for 2019-2020 presented this 15th day of June 2020." Ron, thank you. A lot of you don't know, but Ron and I started on the City Council in '87, '88, '89, and pardon, '90, so we go back a long way. I can tell you that Ron is a very dedicated person to the city. I appreciate our support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. [applause]
Well, I just want you to know that I do love the City of Papa Bluff and it's been a privilege for me to serve on the City Council for some years and very, very thankful for that opportunity. There have been many positive things that have happened over the years, but I'm not going to go all into a long diatribe about those many things, but glad to be a part of those things. I want to certainly say congratulations to returning City Councilmen and say thank you for those that are continuing to serve and certainly congratulations to our new City Councilwoman as she joins the ranks. It's certainly been a privilege to serve with a couple of wonderful City Managers and some wonderful Department officials and great employees. And they are the ones, those folks, that really make this city go. And so I thank, thank for each of you to serve that way. And finally, Mark, you know, the dollar here, I told somebody the other day, I said, "Well", they said, "Are you gonna, you know, get enough service?" "Well, thank you for doing my terror duty," you know. And I said, "You know, I thought that one more dollar really wouldn't change my standard of living next year." [laughing] And I want you to know that the good Councilman Steve Davis said, "Well, Ron, if it does, let me know and I'll give you the dollar." [laughing] [applause] Also, I have the same plaque for Councilman Steve Davis.
Thank you, Mark. I'd just like to say that it's been a privilege and a pleasure to be on Council for the last three years. I feel like we, there's been a lot of positive things accomplished for the city and hopefully we can work together as a team on the Council and the PD to keep things moving forward. It's not always been easy, that's for sure, but I do appreciate the opportunity to be in here and especially coming on and working with some of the experienced Council members that have been here, like Mr. Black and Mr. DeGaris and Robert Smith, and that does make a difference, the experience there. So I appreciate you guys and also the new Councilmen coming on and I wish you well with this and thank you.
[applause]
I'm gonna provide the awards now. At least two gentlemen, both of the large. Same plaque to Lisa Hars, who represents the first. Same plaque to Mr. DeGaris, who represents the second. And again, the same plaque to Ms. Barbara Horton, who represents the third. And Mr. Shane Corn, who represents the fourth. And Mayor Robert Smith, who represents the fifth. We also have a plaque from the Mayor Pro Tim, presented to Steve Davis in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and Mayor Pro Tim of the year 2019-2020, presented this 15th day of June 2020.
Thank you very much, Steve.
[applause]
And the mayor's plaque, presented to Robert L. Smith in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, as Mayor of the year 2019-2020, presented this 15th day of June 2020. Don't y'all spin that bottle.
Thank you, Mr. Massingham. At this time, our Chief of Police of Papa Bluff, Missouri will present an award. Chief Whitley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ron, you know, we're so old that we go back to 1965 and the Papa Bluff Senior High School. And I look around here, you and I, between us, are probably older than two or three of these people put together without, without a doubt. But it's always, you've always been a strong supporter of both the Police Department and the Fire Department and certainly appreciate that and the community appreciates that. You rode, I'm gonna say thousands of miles with the officers over the year and if they needed a helping hand at some time, you were, you'd always help whenever somebody needed something. You and I served on the Council together in, I think, '88, '89 and kinda like me, we're both opinionated and we didn't always agree maybe philosophically, but we always remained friends and done it professionally and I've always appreciated that about you. And at this time, you've come up in recognition of and in appreciation for your many years of public service and professionalism extended to our department, Ron Black, thank you for your leadership and dedication to the citizens of Papa Bluff on behalf of me and the Papa Bluff Police Department.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief Whitley. I don't know if the chief really knows it, but I've said many times that Danny Whitley was probably the best single Councilman I ever served with. We were in good communication with each other and we at times influenced the other over, you know, one way or the other at times. We never had to worry where the other one was, we just knew, you know. And I've always appreciated that terms of service and service.
Thank you, Chief Whitley. Item B, the City Clerk will present to the City Council for their approval the abstract of votes cast at the municipal election held Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Clerk Young, please.
Good evening. Each councilperson has received a copy of the certified abstract of votes for the June 2nd, 2020 election with a total of 2,598 votes cast. In Ward Five, there was one candidate, incumbent Robert L. Smith, with 159 votes and there were eight write-ins. Incumbent Robert Smith won that ward. At-large, with nine candidates and two seats open, the vote went as follows. Robert Duckett, 317 votes. Chester Humphrey, 21 votes. Steve Davis, incumbent, 503 votes. Logan Gilham, I'm sorry, 109. Jim Crisman, 341. Peter Tinsley, 260. Chris Taylor, 487. Brent Eason, 124. Robert Durbin, 61. Unresolved write-ins were 11. Incumbent Steve Davis and candidate Chris Taylor were the winners of the at-large seats. And I just need a motion and a second to approve the abstract.
I make a motion, we accept that.
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Clerk Young. Item E, retiring Mayor of Ward Five, Robert Smith, will address the City Council. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone that has trusted in me over the past year, in fact, over the past several years, and I appreciate the support that I've been given from the Council and the community and the management of our great city. Once again, thank you. And while I'm at the mic, I would like to recognize special guest of mine in the back. Would you all please stand for a second? Yes, those folks are very special to me. Thank you all for being here tonight. Item F, the City Clerk will refer in the newly elected City Council members. Clerk Young.
Just repeat after me. I'm gonna say aye and then each one of you will state your name and then from there you will follow me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Missouri
And that of the State of Missouri.
And of the ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff
And of the ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of councilperson
Of councilperson.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and thank you for your willingness to serve. At this time, we will conduct an election for Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim.
I'll nominate Robert Smith for Mayor.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? None? We're gonna do a roll call vote on that. Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Robert continues to be our mayor. Congratulations. Mayor Pro Tim?
I nominate that we reelect Mayor Pro Tim Steve Davis by acclamation.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Congratulations, you continue to be the Mayor Pro Tim.
That concludes our special meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. We will move directly into our public hearing. The agenda for a public hearing of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, June 15th, 2020 at 6:45 PM in the City Council chambers. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilman DeGaris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a forum.
Okay, thank you. Item three, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing nine, item four, item to be discussed. A, the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri will conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' input relative to the past performance by the city in carrying out the community development block grant for the eleventh, for the eleventh, I can't say it, for the 11th Street Bridge project. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you, go ahead. I didn't know somebody was here in Ozark. [laughing]
I'm here. I've got a quick signage.
Okay. Ma'am, would you please state your name and address for our record?
Yes, my name is Amy Boggs and I am a project officer at the Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission. And this project was given over to me when I got hired on in February, so me and Ms. Nevada have been working together on this project. So construction of the, both the road and the bridge has been completed and the company, Empire Comfort Systems, has been opened for business. We have been monitored by the community development block grant administrators and we are almost completely ready to close out. This is a step of that process. The only thing that is holding us back right now is Empire Comfort Systems did agree to, that they would bring in at least 45 jobs to Papa Bluff and 51% of those would be low to moderate income families that they would be employing and they haven't reached that just yet. So we are waiting on them before we can completely close out this grant. They think, because of COVID-19, that is part of the reason why the hiring delay has occurred. I don't think we're gonna need any assistance getting that, but if we do not meet the March 22nd of 2021 deadline of that, we might have to ask for an extension or some assistance from you guys to help get that going. The city, I mean, the city's cast match has been met for this project and everything is good. Does anybody have any questions?
So, so we just need an approval right now from the Council or?
I mean, we don't even need an approval. We just have to complete the, this closeout hearing.
They just need to host the public hearing as part of the final step to close out the grant.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? We will hold this open a couple more minutes.
Mayor Smith, if no one has been down 11th Street, it is amazing how different it looks and how nice it looks. It's been a real improvement for that whole area down there.
It is. I traveled that just a few weeks ago and it was really nice. It is. At this time, we will close our public hearing portion. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? We adjourn. We've got about five or six more minutes before our regular meeting, so just everybody just kinda visit. council meeting. The agenda for a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty, at seven PM in the city council chambers at three oh one South Fifth Street will now come to order.
Steve, do you mind doing invocation?
In invocation by Mayor Pro Tim, Steve Davis, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
My heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to be here and to conduct business for this city. We thank you for each citizen that here and has interest in the things that have been concerning our city. We ask that you give us all, we ask that you give us wisdom, and help do things according with your will and that are pleasing to you and beneficial to our community. We thank you, and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pray that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Clark Young.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clark Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we will go to item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. And tonight, first, we have Mr. Jim Christman, and please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, members of Papa Bluff City Council. My name is Jim Christman, four six four North Main Street, and I'd like to address you on a budget issue this evening. Congratulations first to Chris Taylor, Steve Davis, and Mayor Robert Smith on their reelection. Robert, I would make note that you got more votes this year than you did three years ago.
Thank you.
I have offered each of you a green piece of paper that has my comments that I want to make very briefly tonight. In the interest of them, I will cover the questions very quickly. There are four questions that are highlighted, and I want to call particular attention to those at the end. Let me begin with some background information. Your 2020 budget shows a capital improvement sales tax revenue of $2,250,000 and capital expenses of $3,128,000. That's a $875,000 shortfall. Most of that is made up with a bond that is budgeted to come in. And the question, first question, is how do you expect to repay the bond for these police stations if you can't make it this year? Question number two, how much can we afford to pay for a police station? Question number three, what is the probable cost for the current police station project? How much can we afford to pay for a new city hall? Are we sure the funds will be there for the project? And how long will this debt repayment last? What do we do to meet the capital needs of the future? In general, the general fund budget is strained now, and how can we start paying maintenance on additional budgets or buildings? What will this do to the general fund budget? Where does the funding come from to tear down the blighted buildings downtown, the parking garages, and the old city hall? In view of the recent rejection of the internet sales tax, what are the plans for more income? Question number four that I'd like to get answered, in view of the recent election results, I believe they clearly show the rejection of the current police station project. Will you, as a city council, allow a citizen's vote on the police station project? I'm gonna skip the rest of the questions there and come back and ask, and I'll go sit down and let you answer these questions, if you will. I will point out that I printed on green paper because this is a financial issue, and that's the only reason for it here. But let me point out that it's, the gold-plated police station does nothing to promote law enforcement, it doesn't help the individual officers, or it doesn't help the public perception of the police department. There are four councilmen that have voted in favor of the current project, and I'd like to invite each one of you to take one of the questions, the highlighted questions that I've asked, and answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Some of those questions can be answered, but probably not tonight. You would probably have to meet with the city manager or someone to help understand this. Next, we have Morgan McIntosh.
Hello, I am Morgan McIntosh. I live eighteen oh four, North Fourteenth Street, and I am the new executive director of Downtown Papa Bluff. I say new, it's been since March, but this is the first time I've got to come speak to you guys. I am here tonight to ask permission to have the firework display show on July fourth this year.
Okay. I think this is something that we do every year.
We just need a verbal.
Okay.
Make a motion and we approve the fireworks display.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. You got it done.
Great, thank you.
Easy, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was pretty painless. I would like to meet with everyone individually when everyone has time, like to reach out to everybody and sit down and discuss our downtown, what we're doing there.
Okay.
Are those fireworks being provided by Briggs and Stratton?
Yes, so Briggs and Stratton is our main sponsor, and I also receive grants from Walmart to fund it.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you do. Okay, next, we have Nikki Johnson and Tasha Clay.
My name is Nikki Johnson, and I reside at four nineteen Persian. We are here for the Wheatley School. We are the organizers of the Juneteenth program that we will be having, and we also would like a fireworks permit for June twenty-seventh. We have spoken with the fire chief and got a safety plan. We have a volunteer from the Butler County Fire Department that is gonna set them off for us, and Chief Whiteley said he would help set them off as well. So, that's why we are here.
Okay.
Where will those be set off at?
At the Wheatley School.
We just need a motion.
I'll motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. You got it done.
Thank you.
You got it done.
You got it done.
I wish everything went this easy. If there'll be no other comments from the audience, we will go to item seven, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. A, the city council will review a contract with MODOT for the land lease agreement for the Gateway to Ozarks property.
Yes, this is the property north of town when you come in from sixty-seven highway. The large sign that's lit up with the flags that says Gateway to the Ozarks, that's actually MODOT right-of-way. They've allowed us for years to have that sign, and all we have to do is give them proof of our liability insurance on the property. We've normally had a five-year lease agreement. MODOT has requested that we change that to a ten-year lease agreement, one reason being that every five years, they have to have that resurveyed, and this would cut down costs for MODOT, and we've never had any issues with the property, or, so we're just asking for approval on that.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
This is to move it to the voting session tonight.
Clarification, yes. Move it to voting session.
This is to move to voting session. Thank you for clarifying that. Item B, the city council will consider a grant application between the city of Papa Bluff and the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration CARES Act for downtown Papa Bluff infrastructure.
Hi, I'm Chelsea. I'm from the Planning Commission. What this is, is the United States Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration allotted $1.5 billion in funds for the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act Recovery Assistance. We believe at the Planning Commission, and we've talked with Matt, that you guys have a project that would be great for this program, and it's actually a rewrite of a project that was submitted last year to CDBG that involves revitalization of some downtown infrastructure. The project area is located between Fifth and Broadway in that portion of Vine, and it would entail construction of new sidewalks, utilities, lighting, parking, and temporary electric. And typically, EDA likes to fund about eighty percent of a project. We have a plan to request them to fund ninety percent, with Papa Bluff contributing ten percent. So, the ten percent amount would be $42,000 of in-kind work and an overall grant request of $421,000. And the P E R was provided by Smith &amp; Company. Do you have any questions?
Did you have anything to add, Mr. McIntosh?
No, I don't. Make a motion to move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You got it done. I wish everything went this easy. If there'll be no other comments from the audience, we will go to item seven, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and consider it separately, he or she may do so. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. A, the city council will review a contract with MODOT for the land lease agreement for the Gateway to Ozarks property.
Yes, this is the property north of town when you come in from sixty-seven highway. The large sign that's lit up with the flags that says Gateway to the Ozarks, that's actually MODOT right-of-way. They've allowed us for years to have that sign, and all we have to do is give them proof of our liability insurance on the property. We've normally had a five-year lease agreement. MODOT has requested that we change that to a ten-year lease agreement, one reason being that every five years, they have to have that resurveyed, and this would cut down costs for MODOT, and we've never had any issues with the property, or, so we're just asking for approval on that.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
This is to move it to the voting session tonight.
Clarification, yes.
Move it to voting session.
This is to move to voting session. Thank you for clarifying that. Item B, the city council will consider a grant application between the city of Papa Bluff and the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration CARES Act for downtown Papa Bluff infrastructure.
Hi, I'm Chelsea. I'm from the Planning Commission. What this is, is the United States Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration allotted $1.5 billion in funds for the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act Recovery Assistance. We believe at the Planning Commission, and we've talked with Matt, that you guys have a project that would be great for this program, and it's actually a rewrite of a project that was submitted last year to CDBG that involves revitalization of some downtown infrastructure. The project area is located between Fifth and Broadway in that portion of Vine, and it would entail construction of new sidewalks, utilities, lighting, parking, and temporary electric. And typically, EDA likes to fund about eighty percent of a project. We have a plan to request them to fund ninety percent, with Papa Bluff contributing ten percent. So, the ten percent amount would be $42,000 of in-kind work and an overall grant request of $421,000. And the P E R was provided by Smith &amp; Company. Do you have any questions?
Did you have anything to add, Mr. McIntosh?
No, I don't. Make a motion to move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our members, and old and new.
Thank you. Item C, the city council will consider bids for the roof replacement project for fire station number one located at three hundred South Broadway.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first of all, congratulations on your reelections and your election. You should have found in your packet a bids from five different companies. Station one's roof is forty-two years old, and then earlier this spring, it started bringing some leaks in the engine bay. Of the companies that submitted, three of them met the specifications. The recommendation that were given is from the one out of Farmington, and I'm not real sure how to pronounce the name of it. They had all four, five companies come and look at it. What they'll do is take off the gravel that's on there, take fiberboard and screw everything down, and then lay new material over top of that. This is not a budgeted item, so we had to bring this to you all. We didn't anticipate this leaking on this. We've been watching station three's roof. It's forty-eight years old, and keeping an eye on it, but this here snuck up on us. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Just to let everybody know, this will come out of the capital fund under maintenance for buildings.
I motion this be moved to the voting session July sixth.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will consider a zoning recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a proposed annexation of property located at four eighty-one Highway W., Papa Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Winters?
Yes, sir. This one's adjacent to the first one, and Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends this property be annexed as RS1 real residential.
I motion this also be moved to voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. A, bill number eight two three nine, the city council will take action on a temporary cell tower height request located at ten seventeen Ridge Avenue, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for first reading of bill number eight two three nine.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will consider a zoning recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a proposed annexation of property located at four eighty-one Highway W., Papa Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a property we've been hearing about going through the annexation process, and planning and zoning took this under consideration, and for the four eighty-one Highway W. property that Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending, when this property is annexed, it be annexed as RS1 real residential.
Make a motion this be moved to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item E, the city council will consider a zoning recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a proposed annexation of property located at four sixty-five Highway W., Papa Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Winters?
Yes, sir. This one's adjacent to the first one, and Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends this property be annexed as RS1 real residential.
I motion this also be moved to voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. A, bill number eight two three nine, the city council will take action on a temporary cell tower height request located at ten seventeen Ridge Avenue, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for first reading of bill number eight two three nine.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
Anorans authorizing Network Real Estate, an agent of AT&amp;T, to erect a temporary telecommunications cell tower located at ten seventeen Ridge Avenue in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of bill eight two three nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
Anorans authorizing Network Real Estate, an agent of AT&amp;T, to erect a temporary telecommunications cell tower located at ten seventeen Ridge Avenue in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption. Motion for adoption.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 8239 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8240, the city council will take action on a contract for land lease agreement with MODOT.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8240.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a land use license agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the City of Poplar Bluff Welcome Sign located on State Right-of-Way on Highway 67 North in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8240.
All in favor? Aye. I'm sorry, he didn't have a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
This has been a good night. Thank you for correcting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor. Help me out here a little bit here.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a land use license agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the City of Poplar Bluff Welcome Sign located on State Right-of-Way on Highway 67 North in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8240 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8241, the city council will take action on an ordinance for annexation of property located at 481 Highway W.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8241.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 481 Highway W. of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by Joe and Karen Knuckles.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8241.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 481 Highway W. of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by Joe and Karen Knuckles.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Young. Bill Number 8241 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8242, the city council will take action on an ordinance for annexation of property located at 465 Highway W.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8242.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 465 Highway W. of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by
Motion for second reading of Bill 8242.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as 465 Highway W. of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and owned by
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Young. Bill Number 8242 is adopted. Item EE, Resolution Number 1926, the city council will take action on a resolution to apply for a USDA grant for a new fire department ladder truck.
Motion for the reading of Resolution 1926.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff authorizing the city to apply for funding from the United States Department of Agriculture relative to the purchase of a fire department ladder truck, and authorizing the mayor and the city officials to execute all documents
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Young. Resolution Number 1926 is adopted. Resolution Number 1927, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the city to apply for a US Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration CARES Act Recovery Assistance Program for downtown Poplar Bluff infrastructure.
Motion for reading of Resolution 1927.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for an application for a grant to the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration CARES Act Recovery Assistance Program for the city of Poplar Bluff downtown
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution Number 1927 is adopted, and that concludes our action required items. Item GG, the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law in Section 16, Point 21, Point 1, Point 2, Point 3, Point 9, Point 11, Point 12, Point 13, and Point 14 revised statute of Missouri following the city manager's report.
Make a motion and move it to closed session.
Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Young. Mr. Massingham.
I just wanted to spend a few minutes on updating you on this year's budget. I know we, as we all know, we went through the COVID-19, and I, and I think most city managers across, probably across the United States, and I'm sure some are in a worse position than we are, but we expected a huge decline in our sales tax for month of March and April March sales tax came in actually 10% above March for last year, which was kind of surprising. The first two weeks of March was before the COVID actually hit, so we had two normal weeks, and of course, we all know then everybody started buying all the toilet paper and paper towels and ground beef and all they could buy. I mean, the stores were empty, so I think that actually helped us. March sales was actually up 13.4% over March of last year. Some of that was again buying up grocery products, also some of the stimulus checks went out, and I know a lot of the box stores in town were selling out of TVs and bicycles and trampolines and kayaks, and they still don't have any. So that actually helped us, so depending on what we get in next month, which will be for May sales, which again, people were getting stimulus checks, so I'm hoping the same thing happens. I also think one thing that helped us with the sales tax was nobody left town to go shop at Springfield, or Cape, or St. Louis, or Jonesboro. They stayed here, and if they didn't buy it off the internet, they bought it here in the local stores, and we appreciate that. I wish they'd continue to do that. The one thing that is going to hurt us is our gas tax. I think MODOT estimated that travel had dropped 50% in the state of Missouri, so the gas tax is probably going to be down 50% for those couple of months. Also, we did not have municipal court for several months, so fines and violations are going to be down. And also, the motel tax, which funds a lot of the Coliseum operating expenses. As most of you know, the motels were pretty much empty for a couple of months. I know they've been busier now, and I'd like to give a little credit to our new park director, Lanny. A couple of weeks ago, the airport manager texted me on a Saturday afternoon and said there was a jet had landed, a small jet, and they needed two rooms in one of the local hotels, and he called around, and there were no rooms available in the hotels. Turns out, the park department was sponsoring a softball tournament. We had 41 teams in Poplar Bluff from out of town, and they filled up the hotel rooms, they filled up the restaurants, bought gas, and I just wanted to tell Lanny thank you because we need more of that, and that really helped us. As I mentioned when we did the budget in 2019, for 2020, that we had a 283,000 deficit budget for this year, and we were hoping that the use tax would pass. It was actually a lot better this time than it was the last time. I think it was only 54 votes. Couldn't remember if it was 54 or 45. But I did mention in December, when presented the budget to you, that we would have to make some cuts this year if it did not pass. One of those was close down the Pool and Fitness Center. One of those was to unfund or quit funding the art museum, and another one was to possibly take our police officers from the 12-hour shifts to the 8-hour shifts. With all that combined, it would have put us into a balanced budget. Of course, the election got postponed, and now we're almost a full six months into the year, so what I would like to do is weigh some different options with possibly these and come back to you the first meeting in July, which I think is the 6th, and get some feedback from the council. And any feedback the council want to give, wants to give me prior to that, please do Other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. I would like to just make this comment. If you can't have fun doing your job, you probably don't need to do it. So I enjoy doing this, and I make a lot of mistakes, but I sure appreciate everyone being with me and correcting me when I'm wrong. Thanks again, everybody. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll take about a five-minute break before we reconvene.